Okay, we're gonna get started.
Undergrad.
Okay, the Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees Study Session for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022 will come to order. Clerk Vorva is not here tonight. He is celebrating his 70th birthday, so we wish Jerry a very happy birthday. I know he's watching right now from his remote, secret location. So, happy birthday to Jerry. What I'd like is for Treasurer Dorchevitz to take the role, and then later on, Bob, you'll have to read one of the letters into the record, okay? So, if you want to take the role?
Certainly. Supervisor Heisen.
Here.
Clerk Vorva is excused. Trustee Stewart?
Here.
Trustee Kermy?
Here.
Trustee Monahan?
Here.
And Treasurer Dorchevitz is here.
Okay. Need a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Treasurer Dorchevitz, seconded by Trustee Monahan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business. So, this is the trustee candidate presentations and interviews. Oh, and we're not doing that tonight. It's not on the agenda. So, anyway, I'd like to just talk about some ground rules tonight, and if the board members have any questions or modifications they'd like to make, please feel free. And Bob, just, the sound system is a little, still a little odd for me. I don't know if you want to...
I could try.
I'm getting a little...
Is this being recorded?
Yeah, should be.
Which number are you?
I'm number four. I don't know. I sound better at this point. I'm not getting any major reverberation.
You're getting higher.
I'm getting a little reverberation right now. Can you just dial it back? Dial it up? Okay, that's better. I just don't want to be this far back because I can't read and talk at the same time. Okay, so, my responsibility tonight is to my colleagues here at the board table and to the nine individuals who have submitted their applications. I will do my best to make sure that the trustees' questions are answered and that the applicants have had a present, a chance to present their best case. Applications have been received from nine individuals. One of the individuals cannot make it tonight, so Bob will be reading his letter into the record at that appropriate time. We will be going in the order in which the applications were received. The applications were due on May 27th, so we started receiving applications about two weeks before that point. So, given the large number of applications and to expedite the meeting process, we'd like each of the applicants to come forward and give a brief, five-minute personal introduction and elevator speech to the board. You know what an elevator speech is, so this is your big chance. After each of the applicants are concluded with their presentation, board members will be able to ask questions of any of the applicants. And I don't know exactly how we want to do that, if we just want to dive right in, or if we want to go around the horn, we can do, we can go either way. So, let's just see how that, how that evolves after the, after the applicants speak. If an applicant does not receive any additional questions, it does not mean that you are ineligible for the appointment scheduled for June 14th. It might mean that we don't have any questions for you. Could be as simple as that. Each of the applicants are still eligible to be appointed on that date next Tuesday. Similarly, applicants may remove their name from consideration at any point before the new trustee is appointed, or even refuse the appointment on June 14th. I would respectfully request that the board members here limit our questions to the resumes and other documents submitted by the applicants. Let's stick within the four corners of the applications. We are not the Senate Judiciary Committee. This is not a Supreme Court nominee hearing. It's not the January 6th hearing or anything like that. So, we're gonna try to stick to the, the evidence presented by, by the applicants. Let's keep it focused on those documents that were submitted by our neighbors, our friends, and our, our citizens who are acting in good faith here tonight. At the end of the meeting, we will have public comment. Again, my request is for members of the public to adhere to the three-minute limit and to make remarks germane to the resumes submitted. This will not be a forum to question the applicants or say things about the applicants. That would be of a derogatory nature. I think that that would not help your cause and may ultimately backfire on the person or persons you are trying to help. So, let's keep it, let's keep it civil. Any other questions by the board members?
Could we identify who is here? I think I see that two are not here.
Okay, so turn your mic on. Make sure our mics are on. So, I just want, real quick, let's just do a show of hands. Again, I'll go by the order received. Robert Miller, okay? Robert Forreiter, okay? Gail Greger, okay? Joe LeBlanc is absent, and we do have a letter from him. Jennifer Buckley, okay? Gary Gronewood. Gary, okay? Dan Callahan is here. Steve Birmingham is here. And Donna Broderick is here. Okay. Okay, so, I have my handy phone here, and I have it set for five-minute increments. I'll be, the clock is not gonna run as soon as you get out of your chair. I'll, I'll be generous and hopefully kind and make sure that I hit that button once you're ready to speak. So, we don't want to rush anybody, and we want you to be hopefully as comfortable as possible. We're just trying to come to, to good decisions here tonight. All right. That being said, anybody else on the board? Any questions? Okay, then let's start with Robert Miller.
Board members.
Is your mic on? Hang on a second.
You gotta get it close to your face.
I don't know if it's actually on.
Thirty-five years in broadcasting, I should know that.
My name is Robert Miller. Before I begin, I want to let you know that I'm a product of South Texas. As you know, South Texas has been in the news recently, and the town of Duvalde is where I spent a lot of my youth. So, I would like to ask everyone to keep those people in your thoughts. That's gonna go a long way, I think, globally in helping that community. I have a bachelor's degree in communication. I have a master's degree in communication. I graduated summa cum laude at Eastern Michigan University. I had a broadcasting career that began in 1966 in Texas, and it moved along to the Virgin Islands by 1968, where I spent about thirty-three and a half long, arduous years in the Caribbean. Somebody had to do it. So, during that time, I had the opportunity to be appointed to several boards by the late Governor Juan Nui, and they are the Board of Land Use Appeals and the Alcohol Control I'm a registered Democrat. I guess there was some question as to whether that qualified me for the board internship here, but I'm gonna tell you that's what I am. I'm centrist, and I like to hear everybody's opinion. And usually in school, we would talk about the two circles. And where the two circles intersect, we have common ground. So, I would approach the position with that in mind. I think all of us are good people. I know I'm here in good company with the other candidates, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, well, we'll do that afterwards, but you still have more time, so...
Well, the idea of gravity, let's leave it at that.
Okay. No, we're gonna do questions after.
All right.
Okay, thank you. So, let me reset my clock here. Okay, Robert Forreiter. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Forreiter is correct.
Okay.
I submitted my third page to Jerry Vorva last Friday, but I think you may have gotten it too late for him to include it in the scanned copies. So, I'll read a thumbnail sketch of that. Robert W. Forreiter, resident of Plymouth Township for forty-five years. My children went to all the schools, all the way up to Plymouth Canton and Salem. And my wife and I have been active in the politics in Plymouth Township for three and a half to four decades, even though many of my assignments took me globally overseas, Asia, Middle East, Europe, South America for GM Powertrain. And my work concluded undergraduate studies with the University of Michigan, getting mechanical engineering degree, master's degree in the business administration. And my forte was basically putting together economic contracts and proposals for corporations and target companies that GM wanted to buy nationwide, maybe thirty to forty percent, then bringing them in to one hundred percent full, once we see how the business plans work together as a dovetail. And the 2008 GM went belly-up, as everyone knows. I happened to be in Beijing, China at the time, and I was offered a buyout package, and I immediately took it and went to GM Asia Pacific, right across the street in Beijing. And since that point, I've been the vice president of global business for GM Asia Pacific, traveling the world, looking at companies that are synonymous with the kind of powertrain components we want in our manufacturing and engineering facilities worldwide. I didn't go back, but prior to GM, I, my early days was as a, during Vietnam, I worked as a EWO Electronics Warfare Officer on B-52 Strata Fortress bombers. Those were the days where we flew from Selfridge, Ascot, directly to Hanoi, back to Manila, then back to Mount Lemons. And but those four and eight years went by very quickly. And my wife said, if I re-up after eight years, she would be gone, because I know I would be going right back to Vietnam. So, I took the out and stayed in the active reserves. And I always maintained a good military relationship, as well as my two boys. Both boys are both military veterans. My son Randy died 2017 at 41 from injuries in Desert Storm with mustard gas. He died in April of 2017. My wife died in October 2017. So, but she's been very active, as both of my two boys were in the township. I, to get me to the short end of it, I, basically, my value added to the township has been, over my years, the past twenty years, I've been working with Chinese suppliers, Japanese suppliers, Singaporean suppliers, encouraging and enticing them to come to Plymouth. Not for altruistic reasons. I wanted them locally, because they are tier-one, tier-two suppliers. I wanted their engineering centers close to me, because I'm in there all the time. And most of them are on Halyard, near my condo. So, they're there for a reason. And they, they've been good citizens, good corporate citizens in Plymouth Township. They had new jobs, they had tax base. I've been interested in growing the tax base in my career. I've been fortunate to travel the world, and basically, I think my background in training will lend itself well. I have discipline, I have a high regard for the township, and the track record you've had for the past six, seven years. I like the pro-growth mode, and I would continue that if I were chosen.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay, next is, next is Gail Greger.
Mr. Supervisor and members of the Plymouth Township Board of Trustees, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to apply for the vacancy on the board, and to tell you more about myself and why I am uniquely qualified to fill that vacancy. I've been a Plymouth resident for thirty years, and I believe in and stand for common-sense, community-focused leadership. My record in Plymouth reflects this standard. I'm an attorney with years of public sector experience, a proven leader, and a dedicated and highly involved member of the Plymouth community. Many of you know me from my work as the Executive Director at Park Plymouth Arts and Recreation Complex for the past five and a half years, as well as my service on the Planning Commission, the Plymouth Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and Plymouth Township Citizen Advisory Council on Arts, Recreation, and Heritage Committee. But I'd like to share with you tonight the rest of the story, the five defining moments in my life that got me here tonight. It's this combination of experience, leadership, and community involvement that makes me the best candidate for the trustees. First, I grew up in Valparaiso, Indiana, a small town outside of Chicago, much like Plymouth, and my deep commitment to community service was sparked when I was selected to attend Hoosier Girls State by the local coatties club. It was there I gained a lifelong respect for the impact that local government has on the daily lives of residents who live and work in their communities. I left that week-long mock-government experience wanting to make a difference in my community. It's a value that I have maintained for forty years and live every day. Second, I went on to graduate with a degree in Public Administration with Distinction from Indiana University's School of Public and Environmental Affairs, currently ranked the number-one program in the country in that field. I was selected to a coveted six-month internship with the state of Indiana, working with attorney, attorneys, monitoring the relationships between local school boards and teachers' unions. It was that experience that prompted and encouraged me to attend law school as a way to continue to make a difference in my community. Third, I worked my way through law school at DePaul University School of Law in Chicago. I worked full-time in the public sector, providing job training and placement to low-income youth and adults while attending law school classes at night, and maintaining a course load of twelve to fifteen credit hours each semester. I was awarded a highly respected Public Interest Law Initiative Fellowship in Cook County, Illinois, and I later clerked for another nonprofit in Chicago, advocating for the rights of children living in poverty. I graduated in four years and was the only night student to be selected as editor on the Law Review. I am no stranger to hard work and dedication, and I bring that work ethic to everything I do, which would include this position. Fourth, after graduating from law school and relocating to Michigan, my first job included serving as the attorney for the village of Pinney in Livingston County. I gained valuable experience in municipal law, skills I currently utilize in my position on the Township Planning Commission, as well as managing the daily operations at Park. The position also solidified my strong belief in the impact and the importance of local government. And finally, the number-one defining moment in my life was when I had my children. I am the proud mother of two wonderful young women, both successful graduates of the Plymouth Canton Community School System, Bird Elementary, West Middle School, and Salem High School. My older daughter has graduated Kalamazoo College, and my younger daughter recently graduated from Indiana University's Kelly School of Business. Becoming a parent taught me so many things, and also reinforced how important local government is to the families who live here. It's the local government that provides and maintains public safety, parks, and the excellent quality of life that Plymouth Township is known for. These five separate but deeply intertwined life events, together with the professional experience stated on my resume, made me who I am today, a common-sense, community-focused leader who is ready and very qualified to serve Plymouth Township with a high level of integrity and objectivity. I have one final comment, and this is for those of you who might believe that I am really a strong Democrat pretending to be a Republican in order to secure this appointment, and that I'm somehow being less than truthful on my application. I would like to remind everyone that though, although I may have voted for a Democratic candidate in the past, in 2020, I voted for all six Republicans who currently serve on this board, and for those of you who ran in 2016, I voted for you as well and contributed to some of your campaigns. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Now, next, we have Joe LeBlanc. He is not here, so if we could have Bob read his letter, that's... I got it.
Good day, Mr. Vorva. Due to an early commitment out of town, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. While I certainly would have changed plans, the schedule just would not allow. Please acknowledge receipt of this email and read into the record at the meeting, which we're doing. While many members of the community and board know me, please allow me a short summary of my positions. I believe in God. I believe our rights are God-given and not government grants. I believe in minimum government at all levels. Government overreach and regulations are the cause of many of the issues and problems today. I believe your pursuit of happiness may not be the same as mine. As long as you do not harm me and my family, then I have no right to regulate your affairs. I believe that very few, if any, victimless crimes exist. Police should concentrate on crimes where someone has been harmed. I am not quote "woke" unquote. I find offense in many of today, many of the beliefs of today's quote "woke" quote crowd. I wish to thank the board for their time and their sincere debate in finding the best new prospect for the open seat. Thank you for your time. That's Joe LeBlanc.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have Jennifer Buckley.
Good evening, Plymouth Board of Trustees. Thank you for considering me for this vacancy. I'm certainly in amazing company here with these other applicants, and you definitely have a tough decision on your hands. First, my name is Jennifer Buckley. I'm a veteran, educator, and small-business woman, police wife, and military mom, as well as a resident of Plymouth Township for the last six years. I'm also the proud mother of eight children, and I'm here with my husband, Brian, a police officer for Royal Oak, a former major in the Marine Corps, and a passionate volunteer football coach for OLGC. Some of you may remember my speech given to the township in 2021 at the Memorial Day Ceremony, where I spoke as a Gold Star Widow, inspiring and urging our citizens to live a life worth their sacrifice. Standing here today, the irony of my own speech has not left me, nor has the great impression of this township board who invited me. Ladies and gentlemen, you already hold in your hands my resume and the bio of what I've done thus far, and you likely already have in mind the person you want voted in. What I would like for you to ponder and consider is what I can contribute to this community distinct from my peers, specifically my character, which steers my political philosophy, and how the state of my family life balances the board most appropriately. A wise veteran on Fox News recently noted, "Where there's adversity, there's opportunity." And I would add, "Where there's an opportunity, there's a servant." I hold firm to this philosophy because it has been tested over my lifetime, and it helped to peel back the layers of my character to reveal what I am made of. At my core, I am a problem solver with a bent toward achieving a distinction and excellence in all that I do, not only for the betterment of myself, but my family, my community, and this great nation. That is why I've served in many capacities and continually look for opportunities to be of real service and not just be a current Facebook politician. One of my favorite quotes is by Edmund Burke, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." Facebook is not substantive; standing here is. Substantive is certainly not described enough in crediting this all-Republican board from turning around a decent set of messes from the last regime. And if you'll have me, we can continue that forward progression of service and fight the good fight, for as my grandfather always said, "For every achievement, we are but one election away from collapsing it again." To that end, I can assure you, I want nothing more than to keep Plymouth Township great and to not fall into the wrong hands again. I promise as a conservative Republican to dedicate my services to the residents through effective and transparent communication. I will listen and respond to the cares and concerns, problem-solving, to find the answers. I will look for ways to initiate and make improvements within budget for the greater good of our community. Further, as a police officer's wife, I know firsthand how important safety is. A prosperous, prosperous community is one in which law and order is respected. In order for community to truly thrive, it must have public safety as its priority. As such, I believe our police and fire to be a top-budget concern and will work to keep it fully funded and current. I will also work to maintain the integrity of the election process, as well as all township services within the current tax rate. As a small-business owner, I would also advocate for greater diversity along the Ann Arbor Road Corridor and to bring greater beauty and function outside of the downtown, which will lead to resident satisfaction and increased revenue for the township. Lastly, most distinctly, as the mother of six school-aged children, two have already left the nest, I make up the nearly fifty percent of this township who has a family with children eighteen and younger. What that means, as the military says, is that I literally have boots on the ground. Both my family and I are the eyes and ears of this community because we are part of that fifty percent. We're not on the fringe of life and most closely represent its citizens. We are the face of a young, modern, conservative, Republican family, already with a history of serving well and sacrificing much for the betterment of the community and its citizens. We are your local neighborhoods and parks. We are your schools and commerce. We are your sports and recreation, your church and politics. This is truly unique and distinct from my counterparts here, as I bring a vibrant, fresh, and current perspective to this board, and I believe this can not only be an asset, but arguably a necessity for the preservation of its highly-regarded reputation, continued success, and its ability to inspire other communities to greater excellence. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Okay. My clock worked, but it didn't make as much noise as it should. So, I don't know what happened there. I'll check the volume again. All righty. Gary Gronewood. Gary, are you here? Okay.
We finally got a U of M civil engineer, and the guy doesn't want to apply.
Well, he may have said, Jerry, he, he, he may have sent Jerry Vorva a, an email. We'll, we'll try to track that down. But Gary, unless you've withdrawn, you are still in the running, but obviously, you're not here tonight. So, we're gonna move on to Dan Callahan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Daniel Callahan. I have been a Plymouth Township resident for twenty-one years. I'm married with two children and six grandchildren. I'm a retired Ford Motor Company Vehicle Evaluation Manager, Powertrain Field Service Engineer. I've been elected as a precinct delegate since 2008 by the people of Plymouth Township. I am running again in '22 to continue to be a delegate. I am a registered Republican, and I love this country. In 2020, primary election, from the people of Plymouth Township, I received the fifth-highest count of votes behind the Republican slate. That is the reason why I am here tonight. The 2020 primary election had no Democrats. I have lived in Michigan all my life, with the exception of the military service when I enlisted in the US Marine Corps. I completed two combat tours of Vietnam in different aviation forward units. I know the real, true cost of freedom. In my career as Ford, I worked in product design, manufacturing, assembly, quality, and cost analysis. I acted as an instructor for dealership technician training. In my program, in my group, we developed Ford technical service information. I was a supervisor for eight powertrain field service engineers located throughout the United States. My engineering investigations involved travel to thirty-four countries around the world as a problem solver. My community service included Habitat for Humanity Home Construction, Little League Football Coaching, and an Ann Arbor VA Veteran Hospital volunteer. In my letter of intent, personal resume, I included the recommendation from fifty-one residents from all over the township. I have a strong desire to continue to serve my township as I serve my country. I consider local government a great opportunity to serve my community. I closely follow the Board of Trustees meetings regularly, either in attendance or through the meeting packets and agenda items. In closing, I think an engineer would bring balance from the township board of trustees. Thank you for your consideration for this very important position.
I moved into Plymouth Township back in 2012, when my wife Beth and I bought the first house. I was drawn to Plymouth Township for a lot of the reasons probably a lot of you were. There's a great balance of having the closeness of the things that you want to do, with the ability to have a nice home, have nice neighbors, and people that you can feel really good about as living in your neighborhood. So moved here in 2012. In 2014, began service for Lake Point neighborhood on their Board of Trustees. I worked on the board there, first as a trustee member, and then after a few years, moved up to the secretary role, the next year after that, moved into the treasurer role, year after that, moved into the president role, where I've served as president of Lake Point Homeowner Association for the past four years. This time, serving my community, my neighborhood, I think has been important because I understand that different people have different concerns, and with every choice, you're weighing the decisions that are, you're trying to find the right balance between what can be good for the neighborhood and at what cost. So I think I've done pretty well at that, and I think Lake Point has really thrived. We've been able to do some social events that I know some of the board members have attended, and you're invited all to our ice cream social tomorrow. So if you can come, that's great. Yeah, prior commitments understood. But when this position opened up, I decided I wanted to put my name in because I thought it was important that the position be filled by the best possible candidate, and that you, as the board members and the trustees for Plymouth Township, had the opportunity to weigh the candidates and decide what was important for your board. I know it's important because not only are you trying to serve the community, but you also are working with an election cycle. That's something that I can only imagine would be pretty stressful, to have your name on the ballot and then having to find out that evening if you have your job or not. So I commend all of you for going through that process and for serving the community of Plymouth Township. My leadership style, I think, is driven by consensus building and trying to understand if someone has an opposite point of view on an issue from me. I want to understand why they do. Having that conversation will allow me to understand, maybe they know something I don't, and even if at the end of the day, we don't come to the conclusion, same conclusion, at least we're able to have that conversation. And so ideally, I would like to see it that before any vote comes to public, that I would know where each member of the board would be voting, which direction. That's the leadership style that's worked for me on a neighborhood of 800 homes, so that's well over 1,000 people, 1,000 customers, 1,000 voters, so you would say. And I seem to have had success at that level, so I think on this level, I would be able to work with this board. I know everyone at this table, and I think you all have done a good job, and I think I'd be able to work and provide some value to the board so that Plymouth Township can continue to be a place where people who are buying a home say, "That's where I want to live." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Wait, hold on, I'm just trying to turn this off. Okay, next we have Donna Broderick.
I'll make a joke. It's like the spelling bee, right? I'm the last one. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to allow me to speak before the Board of Trustees. My name is Donna Broderick. I've been a resident of Plymouth Township for almost 23 years. I believe that I'm the best candidate for trustee. I possess experience, the commitment, and the temperament to continue the township turnaround. I believe I'm the only candidate who has held an elected position in the community. I ran for Plymouth District Library Board in 2002, which is a nonpartisan position, and then I was elected for a second term. I also stood before this body in October 2015, when the late Kay Ireland's position was going to be filled. Unfortunately, someone else was chosen, so I still have a strong interest in being a Plymouth Township trustee. I also have served on the Board of Review since 2018. Thank you Supervisor Heisey for this wonderful experience. I know everybody has my resume and my bio, so I'll just go with that quickly. I'm a graduate of University of Michigan, same program and year as Supervisor Heisey, but we didn't know each other. And then I moved to Washington, D.C. after college, and I worked on Capitol Hill, and then I worked on an MBA in the evening at Marymount University, a small university similar to Bedana. Then I moved over to government, then I moved back here, and I worked in the automotive industry. And then most recently, I worked with the Detroit Bar Association. Then that job ended due to COVID. Right now, I believe in the township, it's a wonderful time to serve. I believe that people are a priority. I know that is the motto, and I think that I would be an outstanding person to uphold these values, actively engage with neighbors, talk to them, ask them what's on their mind. I did a lot of this when I was campaigning for the library board. I went to the parks, I went to the farmer's market. I also would be an outstanding person to continue a lot of the work that the township has been doing already. Again, I served on a Board of Review, and this year, we did not have many people attend because property values were up, and people were, for the most part, were very pleased. In addition, I feel like I'm already reaching out to many residents and neighbors. Somehow, I'm the person that many neighbors come to when they have questions, sort of like, "On 1st of July, a garbage we picked up. Recently, a neighbor is very concerned about golf carts in the neighborhood," and she texted me. So I tried to walk her through what she could do to solve the problem. Even yesterday, I had a random repair person come over, and he says, "I live in Colony Farms," and for 10 minutes, we were discussing various issues on his mind. I've been a registered voter since I was 18 and take this very seriously. I declared an independent because I find myself often in the middle of not being able to really strongly support one candidate or the other. I, like other candidates, have voted for both Democrat and Republican. But I believe that this board should not be partisan. In Ohio, I believe township boards are not partisan. There's no room for partisanship. What's room for is just solid policy to help citizens, residents, neighbors. We're not voting on trade policy or the woman's right to choose. We'll leave that to the Congress and Senate Judiciary Committee, as Supervisor Heisey mentioned. I also have been involved, not so much in my HOA, because the members on the HOA do not want to leave their positions. They've done a wonderful job. However, I've approached them about doing some new programming, and when it comes to a lot of events, nobody wants to volunteer. So that is also on my list to try to get some new events in our neighborhood because we have many new young families. It would be an honor to serve, who will not disappoint you. I welcome any questions from the board. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, you know, I didn't think five minutes would be enough time, but I think it's worked out really well, and everybody got well within the timeline, so that's good. All right, now, I'm going to kind of hold the board here. We could bring everybody back one at a time again. I just don't want to have everybody jumping up and down and answering questions. If we could, if you want to bring everybody back in the same order in which they originally appeared, and then if we have any questions, I could call on them individually, and if there's any questions for that individual, then we could bring them forward. If not, then there would be no questions. I think it would just be better to have them come up one at a time, rather than us kind of cherry-picking them every, you know, every go-around, and they're running back and forth, so.
So how can you make it appear as unbiased and fair as possible? Reverse the order? What are you going to do? You got to scramble it up somehow?
I mean, I could reverse the order, if that's okay with Donna Broderick. I don't know, you're going to be in the hot seat.
Or start in the middle and work out.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on, hold on, we're not saying we're doing that yet.
Or you start in the middle and work out.
No, no, start from the top again. That's giving them a chance to think.
Yeah, I would start from the top. And then, for example, we would, we're just using Robert as an example, Robert Miller. I mean, we could bring Robert back up, and then we could just say, "Are there any questions for Robert?" I personally don't have any questions for Robert. Maybe Chuck does, maybe John does, but at least then he's had his, you know, he's had his opportunity to receive questions from us. Because we are relying very heavily on your resumes. I mean, your resumes and your submitted documents are very relevant, and they're very detailed and thorough, so it's, you know, we've done a lot of prep work already. So you want to do it that way?
Yeah.
And then you want to take a break maybe halfway through, John? You want to, like, maybe around, I don't know, 8:10 or something? We might take some time off.
Want to break now?
I don't want to do it now. I mean, we've only been at it for 40 minutes.
Getting started.
Yeah, we're just getting started. No, we're not.
Mr. Miller looks ready.
So let's, for example, if Mr. Miller were to come forward, then we could go around the horn here, starting with Chuck, and go around and just say, you know, "Do we have any questions for him?" So I guess right now, preliminarily, do we, do any of us have any questions for Mr. Miller?
Yes, I do.
Chuck does. Okay, so come on down.
And I have one question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Chuck, why don't you start us off? What is your philosophy on local government, taxation, and spending?
I like to be within.
There's three things there. Local government in general, taxation and spending.
Well, I think.
And we don't need a speech, but, you know, try to be.
Okay, I think we should tax according to what we're spending and try to keep within bounds. And by the way, if I'm not mistaken, the Board of Plymouth Township is 195 years old.
No.
1827, Mr. Tibbetts, they look pretty good for.
Must be the cream we use.
But yes, I think.
To be honest.
Taxation, I would say, is always too high.
Always what?
High, especially for people in different demographics. As you get older, and your taxes keep getting up, your income keeps going in the other direction.
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah.
And I have a question. Well, two questions, actually. Why in God's green earth did you move back to Michigan from being at the United States?
Thank you for asking that question. My standard answer is the Witness Protection Program. But in reality, my wife is a physician here in Plymouth, and so I came up here.
I see, I see. I joke, but it is beautiful there. I have one question for you. You were on the Land Use Appeals Board. If you've watched any of our meetings or attended any of the meetings, you know that there are times when land use comes into question.
I have not.
You have not?
No, I was in the Land Use Appeals Board in the Virgin Islands, and I was St. Thomas, St. Croix, and St. John.
And how did you handle the disputes that came up within that organization?
You know, you take them on their merit. You listen to them, you ask why, you try to find out, is that a good reason? Is that in the public interest? In broadcasting, radio and TV stations are supposed to act in the public interest, as a public trustee. And I think you folks are in the same game. You're acting for the public interest.
Thank you.
I got one. So there are times when you, as a trustee, must vote in a way that is at odds with your personal belief because of the law on that topic is not discretionary. Can you tell us how you'd reconcile this conflict between your personal beliefs?
If my opinion was just, was at odds with the law, I would go with the law.
Okay.
In fact, I do a little part-time work for a lawyer whose name I won't mention.
Anybody else?
Please.
Yeah.
I want to reflect on what you've said earlier. And forgive me, I'm a practicing attorney in 45 years.
I know, but you're on the forensic team. I won't forget that.
Hold on. Do you admit to having enrolled over 55 years ago, at the same time that I did at Eastern Michigan University?
No, I don't admit that. I don't admit that because I was a late bloomer.
You were a late bloomer.
Yes, I had a whole career before I went to college. By the time I went to college, everything was easy. I tell you, you learn a lot just walking around. In fact, some of the seniors around here ought to go enroll. You'd be surprised how much you know.
You live on Waverly?
Yes, sir.
You acknowledge, you recall, that Republican George Romney was our governor for seven years?
I do.
Do you acknowledge that our longest-serving governor was Wade Milliken of 14 years, known for delicate compromise and consensus?
That's a little far my time. I've been here 21 years.
And you do acknowledge that Eastern Michigan has had national championship.
Forensic teams, number one usually since 1973 that I know of.
Yes.
Maybe before that.
Dennis Fegan, 1973.
Dennis Fegan, Ray Coyle, and.
We're off.
Judy Sturgis Hill, for fashion.
Stan's resume.
She's no longer with us. But the building that used to be Quirk is named after her in her honor. And I taught, by the way, I never mentioned that when I was teaching at Eastern, I was teaching cultural communication, public speaking, and radio broadcasting. Thanks. Any other questions?
Mr. Miller, thank you very much. I do, however, I have to question your judgment for leaving the Virgin Islands.
It's okay. I'm in contact with the stations down there. They have the technology now where I can broadcast from here and make it sound like I'm in the.
We need to talk.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Robert Forreiter.
I didn't have, I didn't make one statement earlier, and I finished before five minutes. So I didn't mention that the previous Plymouth Township Hall used to be ours, Friendly Ice Cream Restaurant. I built that restaurant along with Hardee's Restaurant at the time, but the Friendly Restaurant was great real estate, but in the end, the finances did us in. But I also didn't mention, and two years ago, I was with, well, three years ago, I was with the team Michigan Economic Development, Rick Schneider, when he came into Liaoning, Province, China, and they put on a major presentation to bring corporation back into Plymouth Township in Wayne County. It was turned down by a few members of the Wayne County Board for tax holidays, tax incentives. Otherwise, it would have been a major employer of Plymouth Township on Five Mile. We lost Zhang Ding Corporation to Northville Township on the other side of Five Mile. They offered a few more tax incentives. That's all I have to say.
Chuck?
All right, so same question. What is your philosophy of local government, and what is your philosophy of local taxation and spending?
I've never had a government position, but I pay taxes for the last 60 years. I believe in local taxation, being able to afford and pay for the. We lost Zhang Ding Corporation to Northville Township on the other side of Five Mile. They offered a few more tax incentives. That's all I have to say.
Chuck?
All right, so same question. What is your philosophy of local government? And what is your philosophy of local taxation and spending?
I've never had a government position, but I pay taxes for the last 60 years. I believe in local taxation, being able to afford and pay for the services, the roads, the water improvements, the lifestyle, the security and the fire for the town, for the residents of Plymouth Township. And if it requires a tax increase as we go along, I wouldn't vote to favor for that.
I'm sorry, you would do what?
I would vote for it.
You would vote for a tax increase?
Yes, I would, if it required keeping the services as they are going forward.
Ready?
I'm done. Okay, anybody else?
Yes. First of all, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And you mentioned that you were interested in growing the tax base for Plymouth Township when you were up here for your five minutes.
Correct.
How would you do that?
The number one way to do it is bring in corporations from Asia right now that want to expand. With that tax base, what they bring in, what they do is, if we allow them to come in for, let's say, 100 jobs at the R and D and the distribution center, they're bringing, they're going to hire local American nationals. But the major investments come from their foreign parents. These companies in China are fine, want to get out of China. They want to put design R and D headquarters. Plymouth Township is ideal setting. You've got the local tier one, tier twos and tier threes to service right out of Plymouth Township. My job is to marry them together. That brings in the tax base.
Thank you.
What countries in Asia are you thinking of, of attracting? I mean, right now, it's not a great market.
I got different news for you. There has been a pandemic, correct? As we are known as the Wuhan virus?
Yep.
60% of the corporations that are international want to remove those operations out of mainland China. They want to come to the U.S. because now GM, Ford, Chrysler, all the Japanese fast plants are saying, if you want to be to service us, you must be local. We can't depend on two to three weeks on container shipping time from China to the U.S. If we can bring those corporations here, they're looking for locations, are looking for a few tax incentives. They can hire, they'll pay incentive to hire the local help to train them. Believe me, they are waiting in the wings to leave China.
So you've had an impressive array of global experience, but how do you think that translates or connects to the role of a trustee?
I think from what my experience has been, coming to many of the township meetings, watching all on the closed circuit TV on WOW. My wife has, has attended meetings over the years. I'm very in tune, in touch with what's going on here. I know how the township trustees vote. I'm not a political beast, but I am a smart kind of a guy. I, I vote the Iwala politics and that's how I would serve the public.
So could you, and I meant to ask Mr. Miller the same question and I did and I apologize. Can you tell us about one recent board decision that you agreed with and one recent board decision that you did not agree with?
I haven't disagreed with any.
None?
I like that.
Nope.
Wow.
And I'm a diehard Republican, but I had no reason to disagree. But what I've agreed with, believe it or not, is your planned unit development and your decision on the digital signage. Those are two hot issues. I'd agree with both of them.
Okay, so let's move on. You all set?
I'm good.
Okay, just, you all set? Good, okay, you're not all set?
I am.
Because you're good, okay, okay. All right, all right, thank you very, very much. We should talk some, let's talk sometime about international trade and B-52s. That's.
The drink or the?
The drink or the?
No, guys, the airplane. I'm more of a, I'm more of an aviation fan.
Or the band.
Or the band.
I like Baileys.
No, you have, so that's, that's cool. All right, Gail Greger. So Gail, come on down and we'll start with Chuck. Well, we started at the top.
What is your philosophy of local government taxation and spending?
So I think I made it pretty clear during my presentation that I recognize and appreciate the importance of local government to a community. Like I said, it is the, it is the nitty gritty of what people experience every day in their lives. It's whether your snow is removed, your mail is delivered, how your kids' schools are, the trash is picked up and, and your taxes. So that leads me to how I feel about taxing and spending. I am very proud of the fact that Plymouth Township has one of the lowest tax rates of Western Wayne County. And I appreciate all everyone's effort in keeping it that way while also having an amazing level of services that my family and I have experienced for the last 30 years. I think this board has done an excellent job of finding other ways to fund things like fire trucks and things that you can get money either from the state or some of the COVID relief money that has been awarded maybe already, possibly not spent. I'm not 100% clear on that process from the federal government. But I think that those creative ways of keeping our quality of life high while our tax, or by tax rates, whoa, are very important to the people in this community. Probably one of the number one issues that people, that people express.
All right. Audrey?
First of all, it's commendable that you worked full-time while going to law school, so.
Thank you.
That, that says a whole lot of what you're able to do. But I did want to ask you a question. So you were an attorney serving Pinckney in a, either, what, was it a political connection or a?
So the, the attorney that I worked for was appointed as the, as the village attorney for Pinckney.
So like city attorney?
Yeah, like a city attorney, correct.
What experience from that role would you bring to the board if you were selected?
By the time that I was in Pinckney, Livingston County was under a great deal of development. Brighton was starting to, was starting to grow and expand. There were a whole lot of developmental issues in Pinckney. Water sewer problems, PUDs being approved that I think directly lend themselves, not only to my experience on the planning commission here, but also what the Board of Trustees is going through now as Plymouth Township has some development that, that's going on in specific areas. So definitely, and, and just the ability to work with citizens, with attorneys for developers, with attorneys for sewer and water, sewer and water developers and things like that, just a very level of professionalism. And this was like right after I passed the bar too. So it was, it was a great experience and one I thoroughly enjoyed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Gail, if you were appointed, I know Chuck would feel very lonely up here because we would have six lawyers out of seven, which I think is awesome, but Chuck will keep us in line. Do you feel that, what, what, what difference would that, having another lawyer make on the board? What do you bring, what do you bring that we don't already have, basically, in terms of legal training and experience?
I think not only my legal training and my extensive work in the public sector, which Kurt, I know you've worked in the public sector and John has too, and all have served this township really well for, for a number of years. But I think it's the variety of the background that I bring. I also think it's my ability to collaborate with other surrounding communities. I have a great relationship with everyone on the city of, with everyone in the city of Plymouth, which, you know, this is a community where we have a symbiotic relationship with each other. And you have done a wonderful job, all of you, in the last six years of making sure that that community spirit is, it flourishes because we all thrive because of that. And everybody, and I think almost everybody recognizes that. So I think I have some unique attributes in the different areas of the public sector that I've worked for. I've worked for legal services. I've worked in municipal law. I mean, I've, I've, I've worked now as the executive administrator of a large arts, education and recreation nonprofit in the city of Plymouth. I think it's the big variety that I bring. It's not just, I'm very multifaceted in that, that we bring something else to the table.
Bob?
Just a couple. What does a trustee do?
You don't know, Bob?
Not in the brochure.
Well, you are the representative body for the township of Plymouth. I mean, you are here to represent your constituents, to make decisions about local fire, water, sewer, our, our public safety. You're here to, you're here to serve the residents of Plymouth Township to the best of your abilities.
Okay, so Gail, you serve on a, on a number of boards and organizations, but how would you prioritize if another one of your commitments fell on the same night of a Board of Trustee meetings or special meeting?
I would do the same thing that I've done with the Planning Commission, Bob, which is I always prioritize the Planning Commission. I've had a couple of Michigan Philharmonic Board of Directors on meetings on the same nights and I always, I always choose the Planning Commission. So I would choose the Board of Trustees.
Okay. Same question. Can you describe at least one decision, recent decision that you agreed with and one that you disagreed with?
Well, I really agreed with the fact that you were appointed as treasurer, Bob.
All right.
And I.
Good answer, great answer.
I, I also, I also agreed with the decision on the Elks property. That was a very, very difficult decision at the Planning Commission level that we, that we struggled with and it's been, it's been back and forth. I was not on the Planning Commission when the billboard issue, the electronic billboard issue on M14 was originally raised. I know that that one was also really difficult and is, is, I'm not 100% sure what the status of that is right now. I think it might be heading towards litigation. I know that that was a conflict. I had not reviewed that one. That one I may have disagreed with depending on the ordinance for the sign and once I had an opportunity to review that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Good. I've been writing notes and I have three substantive questions, but I do want to give notice to my fellow lawyer supervisor in our state senate today. There's only one state senator who happens to be a Republican with a law degree. And it sure looks like it. The bottom line of every business decision, whether it's Don Sonnen, Bob, whatever, the bottom line of every business decision is that legal. Forget it with me. I worked hard for nine years for a bachelor's, an MBA and a law degree. I don't, I'm, you know, if you can't handle the legal education, the worthwhileness of the legal education, forget it. Because that's where it's at. The bottom line of every business decision, every police decision, every fire decision is that legal. 30 years involved in the community, city and township. Someone needs to say, thank you for your service on the Planning Commission. Someone needs to say, thank you, Ms. Broderick, for your, for your work on the Board of Review. My three questions are. I spoke with Steve Anderson today, the Recreation and Arts Director over at the Plymouth Cultural Center. He has not received any phone calls. He takes individual requests from trustees like Bob, Dorsey Evans, like Chuck Hermy. An ad hoc. There's a huge void in the township. You are the executive director and a model of fiscal conservatism all across the state of Michigan, having made that into a 52-tenant-paying facility and profitability. My, my question about this is, how, how do you plan to be in any kind of liaison, which is a total void in the Plymouth Township and on our substantive life, quality of life, in athletics and the arts? I happen to be a strong participant, and I'm not going to say anymore, in athletics and the arts.
Well, I believe in strong collaboration across the board with all of our neighbors in the, in southeastern Michigan. I think we've demonstrated that recently with the MITC corridor, with Northville and the Lamb Bank and I believe Wayne County is, is involved in that too. So I bring that same sentiment to how I would want to interact with the city of Plymouth if I was requested to do so. So that would be something that would be, you know, a request of the, of the board or if they wanted to form some sort of a liaison, I would be happy to serve in any capacity, just as I would be happy to serve in any other capacity as a liaison to any of the other boards or, you know, organizations that the, that the board would want me to, or select me to, to serve on.
So you would be willing to serve in that kind of liaison?
Absolutely, if, if that was requested.
Okay, I, I think there's another huge professional community omission here and that's a thank you to Mr. Don Sonnen. Because it's my understanding now that the gymnasium at Plymouth Arts and Recreation Center is rented out, according to Steve Anderson with the City of Plymouth, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM at least five to seven days a week.
We are at capacity in the gymnasium right now.
Okay, I received a wonderful text message substantive from A to Z. The question is, with your involvement in the community, this is from a 44-year resident of Plymouth Township. With your involvement in the community, how do you intend to determine what is needed by the residents? And are you willing to engage with the community members in solving problems, challenges and working for the best interests of all?
I'm involved with community members every single day. I've had an open door policy at Park from day one. Township residents, city residents, people from other communities. You don't have to be a Plymouth resident in order to use our facilities. I would expand that role to the Plymouth Township trustee. I believe in talking to my neighbors, talking to people that I know in business. I've been a member of the Chamber of Congress since 2013. I was appointed to their board last year. Very involved with the business community in Plymouth. Very knowledgeable about what concerns this community has. I know how to listen. So I think that there are definitely concerns with, and not that there's anything wrong, but Plymouth Township residents want to continue their excellent quality of life, their excellent fire and police protection. I know that there's a lot of interest in connectivity between, so that people can bike and walk and jog into downtown Plymouth or to Heinz Park or other areas of recreation or to the township park. So I think you need to listen to those concerns of my neighbors, coworkers and business people. I see many, many people on a daily basis and, like I said, I never, I never close my door.
Gail, you, so you're the executive director of Park. You report to your own Board of Directors? How does that work?
Correct.
Okay.
There's, Park has a five-member Board of Directors. Same Board of Direct, almost the same Board of Directors they've had since the very beginning of Park and I, I work for them.
Okay, so your, what's, what's your annual budget look like?
For 2022, it's $900,000.
And you are running basically at a, do you make a, I know you're a nonprofit. Are you, are you making a profit nevertheless?
Yes.
Okay.
Am I allowed to say what it was?
Go ahead.
The EBITDA for.
What? Let me add on.
Thirty, thirty-five, $35,000 for May.
Okay, good.
For, for the month, yeah.
For the month, okay.
For the month of May, which we in turn reinvest into that facility, right? Because it's a nonprofit. We just did a major, major upgrade to the electrical distribution panel that was probably put in in 1952, so it was a little scary. And then, of course, everybody knows that we redid our parking lot in 2019 in collaboration with Friends of the Rouge, with a major, major grant from the state of Michigan and the EPA to put in rain gardens and environmentally sound so that we're not putting any stormwater runoff into this, into the system.
Okay, you all set?
Final question and maybe a little lighthearted, which is not expected from a Dutch Scot Presbyterian lawyer, but with the financing coming from Mark Malcolm and Don Sonnen, would you describe them as, the last seven years you've had to be accountable to two gentlemen who are fiscal conservatives?
That's a resounding yes. When you, when you work for the former CEO of many companies, as well as the former CEO of Tower Automotive and his CFO, who are all on our Board of Directors, you've got to believe that they know every penny that is spent. It's fiscally tight. We do not spend more than, than we can afford to spend, than the budget allows. Making the, but making the budget and bringing in the fiscal numbers in every month and reporting the budget. and reporting the budget is one of my main job responsibilities, is to make sure that that place is sound, and I know how to do it.
Closing statement.
No closing statements, Counselor.
All right, all set?
Thank you.
Okay, you want to check on the sound?
Yeah.
Bob's just going to check on the sound system real quick because we've had a couple folks watching us at home who claim that the sound system may be somewhat defective right now. Would, we're sort of halfway through. Do you want to take a quick five-minute break or something?
Yes, please. Your sensitivity is good.
So we will take about a five-minute break and come back in a few minutes here, okay? Turn your mics off, please. Kermy's here. Audrey's here. All right, let's go. Audrey, Audrey. Audrey, Audrey, Audrey. I've always wanted to gavel you down, so. Okay. All right, so we're back. Please turn your mics back on. So we've been told that right now we are not, we're not live on YouTube. There's been some disconnection between us and YouTube, but there will, we're still on cable television. And what we're going to do is take, we're recording this, and we will put this on YouTube as soon as we can, as soon as we are allowed access to the YouTube site. So just an FYI on that. Okay, we are going to resume here with Jennifer Buckley. Jennifer? And Mr. Kermy will begin.
I've had a lot of time to think about it. It's the same question. It is, what is the philosophy of, what is your philosophy of local government? What is your philosophy of taxation and spending at the local level?
So like I said in my elevator speech, I am a fiscal conservative. So I do believe that, you know, at this level of government, you know, we have a lot of decisions to make in terms of, you know, the tax rate and everything. And so far, from what I've seen, we're doing a very fair job. Our, you know, summer and winter taxes are fair and average, and I think we're allocating those funds for the services that we need. I have checked on a few of the local things that we're, you know, that we've dived into here as a local government body. And, you know, with the downturn of the economy coming and this looming recession that everyone's fearful of as we drive down Ann Arbor Road and see these gas prices, you know, there's a lot of fear that's, you know, beginning to happen in the community. And I can really see that at some point, you know, we are going to have to tap into that conservative Republican philosophy of, you know, pulling back on some of our spending. I noticed in particular some of the senior services. And while I don't want to completely comment on those things, it did strike me as interesting because, you know, my husband and I have talked that, you know, aren't these the kinds of things that, you know, churches, charities, your neighbors are supposed to be taking care of? Is this, you know, a local government expenditure that we really need? So that's the type of conservative Republican I am, to your question.
Thanks.
Thank you for your service, your family's service. We appreciate it. You mentioned that adversity equals opportunity equals service. If you were placed in this position as trustee, what do you find adverse regarding this Board to create the opportunity to serve?
Oh, I don't think I find anything adverse about the Board at all. I think it's actually a very challenging position to be in. But that's, like I said, I'm a problem solver. So having that challenge and coming up here and rising to that challenge means that I am able to serve and I am able to give back in a way that, you know, a lot of people are just kind of hiding behind screens and feeling like they're doing something for the world, and they're not. So I don't find anything adverse about being up here. I find it a challenge, and I'm looking forward to the challenge if you'll have me.
What civic experience do you have?
What, I'm sorry?
Civic experience do you have?
What civic experience do I have? You know, to be honest with you, I don't have a ton of civic experience. I have, I've served my country. I've sacrificed for my country. I worked for the Tucson Optimist Club while I was in the military, as well as, you know, I worked for Meals on Wheels with my children. Trying to think of some other things. Worked for the Fredericksburg Tour of Homes when we lived in Virginia, working on, you know, the Christmas tour and decorating and stuff like that. And, you know, for the last 10 years or so, I've been a homeschooling mother. And I pride myself in that, and I like to say that that's been my civic duty. And I'm very proud of that and trying to turn out good citizens. I currently have a son who's a Marine and is now stationed at Camp Pendleton. I'm very proud of that, so, and I've got six more to come, so we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you and your family's service to our country and our communities is tremendous. I mean, you are a Gold Star Widow. Your first husband, who was lost in Iraq, was a graduate of West Point. You're now married to a Royal Police Officer. Your son is a Marine. I just can't say enough about the service and sacrifice that you've made. I had a lot of fun dealing, working with you on the Memorial Day service that we did last year, and I got tremendous accolades, you know, because of that and because of your remarks and your heartfelt remarks at that event. Trustee Kermy had sort of started that discussion, but I'd like you to expand a little bit more on, basically, two-thirds of our budget is public safety. It's police and fire. And I always ran on a platform that the number-one function of local government is public safety. And that's something that's very important to me, and I think the taxpayers are more than willing to support that with their tax dollars if they understand that they're getting value for that. So I know that's a somewhat leading question, but what is your specific philosophy on local government with respect to public safety? Police, fire, dispatch? What does that mean to you as a resident? And how would you want to expand on that as a trustee?
Yeah, so, like I said in my speech, that, you know, it's absolutely paramount that we keep our citizens and our community safe because if we don't feel safe, we're not, we don't have the ability to thrive as a community. And we've seen that happen. And we've seen that happen. Some of my best friends live in Chicago. It's been two years since they've been downtown. They miss it. They're kind of stuck in the suburbs now of Libertyville. And it's, it's a very sad situation to be in. So my philosophy is we need to stay up to date on these things. We need to get the pulse of the, of the world, the community, you know, talking to our police officers and asking them like, what is going on? What are the new trends that you're seeing? Paying attention to crime rates, paying attention to the domestic violence. Is this something that we need to be hyper vigilant on? Yes, we do. Because that's why Plymouth Township is the place where my husband and I settled. My husband worked in Gaines in Virginia. And we did not want to live where he worked. It's just an unsafe situation. And we came here because of that very fact. Like this has, you know, two-thirds of your budget is towards your police department. We want to keep it that way. And we want to be hyper vigilant, working with the police officers to know what is the pulse of society and the community, to keep everybody safe so our community can thrive.
If you are appointed to this position, would it be your intention to run in 2024?
Absolutely, absolutely. This is definitely a very exciting time for me. I am new. I don't have the record that, you know, a lot of my constituents have. I'm not a lawyer. I am a mother. I was just talking with these ladies over here. And I was just touched when they said, we don't want a lawyer. We want a mother. We want someone like us to be on here. I know.
Hey, no.
And I just thought that was.
Let's not go that far.
You could be a lawyer and a mother.
Well, I'm a lawyer and a mother of six children, so.
Yes, let me be clear. They enjoy what you're doing so far. I take that back. But, but I think that they see something that they can relate to. And they, they want someone to have a voice for them. And I really appreciate that. And, you know, that's who I am. I think the question you need to ask yourselves is, am I competent and capable to sit on this board outside of the fact that I'm not a lawyer, having a ton of civic experience? I am a very quick learner. I'm a self-directed learner. I've taught myself almost everything, including classical education. I, you know, raced in six triathlons after the death of my first husband. And I had to get right at it, learning everything I could about cycling, running. I forgot what, swimming. You know, and I did that with my newborn in tow. So that's, that's just who I am. And.
Bob?
Yeah, so you've stated on your resume, and you've mentioned it a number of times, that you elected to homeschool your children. Can you please describe, you know, why you chose that option over a number of other options, including PCCS, charter schools, secular, non-secular private schools?
Yeah, that's a very great question and one that's really near and dear to my heart. I've actually tried about just everyone, Catholic schools, public schools. And the one that, that really falls just close to my heart is a family-centered education. We, we've tried the Plymouth High School. My son was there. And we pulled him after two semesters when helicopters were going over our house in this, after the wake of the Oxford High School shooting. I think that the, the public schools are in grave danger. I think it's a very sad and disappointing place to be for our children. It actually gets me choked up. The ideology that's being, trying to put on our kids, the indoctrination, is very scary. I don't want anything to do with it. So my husband and I have elected to homeschool our children. We feel that that is actually the best place to raise civic-minded, you know, adults. And.
Bob?
So same question that I asked at least one of the others. Is there times when you, as a trustee, must vote in a way that is at odds with your personal beliefs? Because the law is, on that topic, is not discretionary. So you've indicated that you're very conservative. And there would be times in which, in order to follow the law, you would have to vote in conflict with your personal beliefs. Otherwise, you would not be following the law. How would you reconcile that?
I would reconcile that by voting my conscience, plain and simple.
So what does a trustee do? What's the job of a trustee?
Well, the trustee is here to fill vacancies. They are here to.
I'm just, I'm still trying to figure it out.
Yeah, I guess it changes. But yes, you're, you're here to represent the people. You're here to keep the, the budgets balanced. You're here to keep our public safe and funded. And, you know, to just continue progressing forward in a, in a safe and balanced way so that, you know, our community can thrive.
Which of your professional experiences, do you think, or, or life experiences, if you, if you would, is most relevant to this position? What do you think connects, connects you the most to this?
Well, I think that, you know, I have varied careers, you know, over the last 30 years. My military service, I'm very proud of. I learned a lot of, you know, high-pressure stressful situations like this, for example. This is very new to me. And I almost feel a little bit more comfortable in combat boots, to be honest with you. But, you know, I got the pearls in the heels today. And that'll have to do. But high-pressure situations, I was a weather specialist in the Air Force and the Air National Guard for a total of eight years. And just, just a very interesting position to be in, working with pilots. High-stress situations where we had, you know, I was working with the Army and we had a jump scheduled and, you know, the soldiers were due to get dropped on the drop zone. And, you know, that high-pressure situation is something I feel like I can handle. I think that is part of the job of being up here and, and being grilled and, you know, being able to have to answer those questions and deliver the right results, which is what I did. And I received the Air Force Achievement Medal for that. You know, as far as other jobs that I've had, I owned a, my, and one of the ladies over here just discovered that I owned a small faith-based store in downtown Plymouth. And what was unique about that situation was it allowed me to learn, you know, small business structure and taxation and to be creative and organized and run a household at the same time, supportive husband. So those things I bring to the, to the board as well. I'm also. One of the things I, that I have to say I am very proud of is when I was a Gold Star Widow in the wake of those times, I took to racing. Okay, I took to racing to, you know, be able, be able to grieve well and to rally the community and bring the community together. I wanted to be the face of hope and inspiration for my community. I think I did that at, at the speech, which is, which is why I'm here today. I think moms appreciate me and they, they see me at face value for who I am and what I am. But one of my proudest moments was rallying a handful of widows to Washington DC, where we raced for our husbands. We were featured in Fitness Magazine. We were honored at a dinner for Health Net Federal Services for the, for my leadership there. So, you know, those varied in different businesses and accomplishments that I've had over the years, I think would, would really be an asset to the board.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Okay, John.
I agree with and concur with the supervisor. A very honorable resume as a Gold Star Mother. This afternoon, I called Dr. Michael Rice, and he took my phone call. State Superintendent of Schools, Fourth Floor, Hannah Building. Since moving to 20, here in 2016, why have you, or why not have you, registered your eight children with homeschooling? Under Michigan law, you do not have to register your children. Was that the option you chose?
Yeah, because I'm not electing to be a private school.
So your children, your eight children are not registered with the state of Michigan, Michigan Department of Education?
Well, they have been because they've been in school. So, and when I let the school know that I would be homeschooling the Department of Education.
Second question. I happen to come from an academic family, and I'm the only lawyer.
Yeah.
There's a Dutch lady here who has documented my family's academic background. I don't have a degree in education. I don't see that your degree here is in Ed or Ed Psych.
Actually, it does have a Bachelor's of Science in Education.
Is your degree in education?
Whomlaudee from Austin Peace State University.
Okay. All right. Could you serve as liaison with the city for? Have you ever been inside TARC? And could you serve as a liaison for athletics and the arts?
Could, I don't understand the question. Could I?
I come from a city background, the second oldest city in Wayne County, Wyandotte. We have tremendous recreation. We have tremendous supports for culture and the arts, fostered and nurtured by the city of Wyandotte. What, do you, do you see yourself as being able to be a liaison for athletics and the arts with the people of Plymouth Township?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I'm teaching girls fitness at Christ the King Homeschool Cooperative. And I just mentioned to you that I led a group of Gold Star Widows to Washington DC. So I've already been a liaison in that capacity and an advocate for that, as well as the numerous races that I have, that I've raced in. Six West Point triathlons, an Army 10-miler. So I'd be a perfect liaison for that. Thank you for the suggestion.
Okay. Very good. Next, we're, thank you very much, Jennifer. Next, Dan Callahan. And we will start again with Mr. Kermy.
What is your philosophy of township government, taxation, and spending?
I guess taxes should equal spending. I don't think we should have a fee to pay our taxes. And for, as far as local government, I think currently, what's going on with the pandemic and everything else, our government has worked well. I like what they do. I can't answer anything else.
Thanks.
Mr. Callahan, thank you for your service as well. Especially the fact we got two, you said you had two tours and, two tours?
Yes.
Yes. You're currently a precinct delegate?
Yes, I am. I have been since 2008.
You answered my, my question. And what does a precinct delegate do? What's the role of it?
Really, what I see is what you can do in your precinct area, working with the people within that precinct, making them aware of what the delegates have in common to whoever is running for election and to keep them informed.
Of the issues?
Of the issues or the people.
Okay. And do you normally have a convention as well? Do precinct delegates get together?
Yes, I was just at the convention, the Republican Convention in Grand Rapids for the selection of all the elected areas. And then there's another one coming up in, end of August, I believe, in Lansing. And that will be the finalization for what's going to be on the ballot for the delegates, as well as what's on the ballot for the Secretary of State, etc.
So you put on here that you were, you had ran the last election cycle, correct, for the position you're now here today for?
Yes.
And, and how did you do?
I was fifth against the four-person slate.
Okay. Was that your first race?
Yes.
Just like me. And if you were not elected, I'm sorry, if you were not appointed to this position, would you run in the next election cycle for it?
That'd be a choice I'd have to make. I'm not sure right now.
Okay. And you also said that there's a true cost of freedom. I know we went through this with whether or not you would vote your conscience versus what the law is. Do you think sometimes the true cost of freedom should be compromised in any way?
No.
Why not?
Why would it be compromised? We are a country with a constitution that is the law of the land.
And that's something that you're willing to defend?
Of course.
Thank you.
Yes, he did it twice.
Can you, can you clarify? I wasn't sure I understood that question.
What question?
What you just asked.
About that, would he, would he defend it, defend freedom?
What did, what did that mean?
Well, he understood the question.
I didn't understand, I didn't understand what, what his answer was. Can you?
He, he writes, he wrote in, as well as gave in his speech, gave the fact that there's a true cost of freedom. When you're sitting on a board, if you are not going to do the right thing, then we're all here doing the wrong thing. Okay? So we're going to stick up, stand up for our freedoms in this world. We want to make sure that we get people on this board that are going to do that. They don't compromise just because somebody else comes to them and say, hey, do this. So you are a person of your own mind. Okay, that's what I mean. Do you understand that?
Not really, but.
Let's, let's move on. Do you have anything else?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Mr. Callahan, in your cover memo, you state that voter integrity and transparency in government are two of your core beliefs. Do you believe that the election of 2020 in Plymouth Township was done in a transparent and fair manner?
Yes.
Do you believe that was the same at the state level in Michigan, November of 2020?
No.
Okay. Could you expand on that?
No.
Okay. Fair enough. I have no further questions.
Okay, so I will ask you the same question I've asked a couple others because I wasn't sure. I, I apologize. I don't mean to badger you. I just wasn't sure. I wasn't clear on your answer to that last question. So if you have a situation where you have the law and you don't agree with the law, would you, how do you reckon? Because the law may be in conflict with your personal beliefs. How would you vote? And how, how do you reconcile the fact that you, you have a fiduciary duty to the public to uphold the law?
I swore oath to support the Constitution of the United States. It's a country of law. I would vote for law, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't, I wasn't sure what your answer was. I just didn't get a clear, a clear impression from that. So what do you think are the most challenging aspects of this position for you personally in terms of conquering the line curve?
In regards to what the constituents have to tell you, as to what you're representing?
No, whatever you think. As a trustee, what are the most challenging aspects of that, of sitting on the board and being a trustee?
I think making correct decisions based on what your constituents tell you and what you know.
Okay. Can you tell us about at least one recent Board of Trustees decision you agreed with and one you disagreed with, and the reasons why?
Let's see, I agree with the tree ordinance that came out when it was modified after six times. And finally, it was voted on and you guys accepted it that way. That I felt was a very strong, correct way to do it. I disagree with what you just did with the Elks. I disagree with what you just did with the Elks. I don't think you listen to the people. Period.
Okay, thank you.
Can I do, I just want a quick follow-up. What's your philosophy on public safety, police and fire services that we provide?
Number one.
Number one. Did you support the public safety milage in 2018?
Yes.
Okay. John?
I have no questions. But I do want to thank you for your service. As a Marine Combat Veteran, very honorable. I want to thank you for your service at Ford Motor Company. As a state rep for six years, I voted, you know, Father, Son, Holy Ghost, and Ford Motor Company. And finally, I want to thank you for coming to, I don't know what the right word is, probably many board meetings in the last two years that I've seen you here. I happen to have attended three years prior to my election in 2020. But I appreciate that at least you showed up. Thank you.
Being retired, you have the time to do some of these things.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, very good. We're going to move on to Steve Birmingham.
What is your philosophy of township government, spending, and taxation?
Hi, Chuck. So my philosophy of township government is that the township government is there to serve the citizens and the business of the township. So taxes would be whatever is necessary to provide the safety, fire, trash pickup, road, whatever needs to be done. So having given balance, that would be my philosophy.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Birmingham, I commend you for being the president of the Lake Point Homeowners Association. That cannot be an easy job.
Thank you.
What experience from that, as being president of that association, can you bring if you were to this, to this board, if you were appointed?
Yeah, I think it's very relevant. It's just on a smaller scale. So having 800 homes, that's a lot of different people who have different opinions about what should happen in the neighborhood, what's important for spending, should we raise our dues or not, those kind of things. And then we have an eight-person board, very similar to this, where we're working, trying to decide issues, hearing other people's point of view, and then trying to come to, I like to come to a consensus. Sometimes that's not always possible. But working with that board structure for the past eight years has allowed me to understand how to listen to people and then how to make a decision and move forward.
If you were appointed to this board and knowing that you, you're a consensus-building person, if you found yourself in a position where there is no consensus, how do you handle that?
Well, I would try to understand the opposite side of you. But like you say, if you got to a point where it's, you have to go ayes and nays, then that's how you would handle it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of questions. So I think in 2015, when the supervisor position was open, you came forward and applied for that, right?
Correct.
And then recently, you had indicated that you were interested in the treasurer's position, or at least that's what I gleaned out of some earlier comments that you had made. And you're also here applying for the position as a trustee. But since 2015, there's been two elections, 16 and 20, but you never ran, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, correct in that I had not ran. I wasn't interested in the treasurer's position. I was interested in how the position was going to be filled.
Okay.
So I did want to clarify.
Stand clarified. Okay, but you didn't, you've never ran for office, right?
That's correct, yes.
So same question I've asked others. Can you describe at least one B O T decision you agreed with and one you disagreed with, and the reasons why?
Sure. So the trustee position to me is you are representing the people who live in Plymouth Township, most importantly. I see the citizens of the township as the people that are putting their trust in the trustee position. One decision that was made that I disagree with was the Courthouse Grill property. I thought the development was too big for that piece of property in that specific location. And one decision that I agreed with was the decision recently to put the trash and recycling out for bid because that was following the policy and procedure of the township and that there wasn't going to be any shortcuts taken. But following the policy and procedure, the trash going out to bid for the different companies to place their RFPs.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service as president of the Lake Point Homeowners Association.
Thank you, John.
Temperament, knowledge, and sensitivity, and kindness to people in our sub.
I try.
Would you be anxious for me to ask supervisor, to ask the clerk to provide a record? It's a very traditional thing in public life. Since 1999, when Brad Cadrich and I entered work in this area, how many elections have there been? And how many have you voted in?
I have voted in every election that I've been eligible to since I've moved into Plymouth Township.
Thank you. Mr. Supervisor, I think that's a fair question to ask each applicant. How many elections have you voted in since 1999? I would like the clerk to produce that record. And if you missed, I'm awful sorry.
I mean, it's readily available, so we.
So does that mean we're going to ask him, or you're going to ask him?
John, are you going to ask him?
No, I would like the supervisor to ask the clerk to provide a record of the eight, nine, or seven, I don't know, nine applicants, whatever. How many elections have there been since 1999? This is a Brad Cadrich, easy cheese.
Assuming they lived here. If they didn't live here.
Assuming they lived here.
I mean, I didn't move here until 2006, so I mean, what?
Okay, you want to make it 12 years?
I'm a carpetbagger. I mean, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
That's what they said back in 2010, you know, among other.
Okay, there were 12 disciples. How about 12 years?
Whatever.
Let's go back 12 years.
We can go back 12 years. It's all public record, so it's not like it's some secret.
Well, but I think it should be publicly disclosed.
It's fine. I mean, we can provide.
We had a recent board member who, prior to him getting elected, never voted in an election in Plymouth Township.
We can provide. We had a supervisor who didn't even live in the township until like two weeks before he was selected, so.
Well.
Anyway, I mean, John, it's public record. We can get you that record. What you do with it after that is up to you.
No, I think that should go out as public knowledge. And I was simply guessing, knowing how conscientious a person you are and your commitment to community, that you probably have voted in every election in the last 20 years since moving into Lake Point. Okay.
Okay. Awesome. Y'all set? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Donna Broderick. So you know the Kermey question. Is Chuck going to change that up at all?
No. Going to be fair. She's had plenty of time to practice.
20 minutes now to answer that one.
Plenty of time to practice.
Since we need a little humor. If you've ever seen that SpongeBob episode where Patrick is taking driver's ed and it's opposite and they have the earpiece, you know what I mean? He's feeding the answer. It's kind of like that.
So here's the question. So people, if they're at home, they can hear it also, is what is your philosophy of township government? What is your philosophy of township taxation and township spending?
Well, my philosophy for taxes are that nobody wants their taxes raised. But I know sometimes, like with property taxes, if it's tied to inflation, you have no choice. I do not believe in big spending. I am fiscally conservative when it comes to financial matters. And especially in this day and age, I think especially most governments are, you know, trying to keep a tight lid on things. And I know the township has done a great job at trying not to raise taxes and still keep the same programs that they used to have. What was the third part? It was about local government?
Yeah, local government or township. What is your philosophy of government? What should they be doing or not doing?
Well, I think what Plymouth Township is doing is great, especially the turnaround program. But I think that they should, I think it's good to talk to residents and see what they need, do a fine, you know, fine-tooth comb over the budget and see maybe where they can try to save money or reallocate money, things like that.
Nobody wants big government, right? That's the. Ms. Broderick, thank you for what appears to be a lot of service, pro bono service and service to the community. It looks like you have indicated that, did you run for a position in 2015?
What it was, was that they, anyone could run or speak at that board meeting. You didn't have to. They were just trying to fill it for the rest of Kay Arnold's term.
I see.
So at that meeting, you could come and make a presentation, which I did along with other candidates. But the board went to decide with Steve Mann. As you know, he was a former trustee and the township supervisor. And I know there was some dissent among some of the current trustees who are here today about the selection of Steve Mann. But I think they made the decision that was the right decision at the time because they wanted to move somebody in quickly for that position.
Yeah, Steve was appointed in large measure. I mean, I watched, I was in the audience, but, I mean, and you guys, Bob or Chuck, my sense was that they needed to fill the position quickly. It was an election year, I believe, at that time. And Steve had made a promise that he was not going to run.
Yeah.
He would not see. That was the key thing. They wanted to, he, because he is a very successful attorney, I mean, he does a lot of work for us. He does bond work for a big law firm downtown. So he really just did it as a placeholder.
I see.
Without somebody having to come in and, you know, learn the ropes quickly.
Also, your experience at the Department of Treasury in D.C., it looks like from July 92 to January of 97, you worked there. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I wanted to continue working on Capitol Hill, but the congressman I ran for was Dennis Hertel. His district was redistricted. And then this opportunity came up at the Department of Treasury. Due to my language skills, my Polish language skills, and at that time, I was in the Office of Eastern Europe in Russia, as they called it. And that's when everything was changing in that area of the country. So it was a very exciting, unique opportunity to work at that department in Washington, D.C.
So it looked like you had some, you have experience in economic policy and initiatives. Do you think that experience will help you if you are appointed to the board?
Yes, I think so. That was more on a larger scale. Obviously, we are helping a lot of these new democracies develop tax systems and, you know, different kind of financial models and things like that. But I think that definitely would. I mean, that was a long time ago. But I think that gave me an interesting view of government, too, because I was at the federal level and previously I was at the legislative branch. So that was outstanding experience. I didn't get paid a lot, but it was invaluable experience that I still talk to a lot of people about, that I wouldn't take back or anything.
Thank you.
You were on the Plymouth Library Board, correct?
That's correct, for two terms.
Two terms. So you just chose not to run again, or were you?
Yes, I think that's what it was. I think I, at that time, I was looking to do something else. I think at one time, I thought about maybe even the Board of Trustees, but sometimes the timing wasn't right. But when I ran for the Library Board, I figured it wasn't that big of commitment. I had a two and a four-year-old, and that was a great start for public service. I really enjoyed campaigning. I know some people don't, but I enjoyed talking to different people, learning about different things. And you'd be surprised what they don't know even about the role, the elected position. Everybody kept asking, are you going to be a librarian? I said, no. Can you order these books for me? People would walk, once I got elected, people would walk up to me at school and say, can you order these books? And so it just was interesting, even with this trustee position, I think a lot of people don't understand what they do. Maybe they think you just show up at the parade or at the tree lighting, but there's a lot more to them.
Well, I think that's going to be Bob Dorshavitz's next question.
He's always at the tree lighting. I remember when you had the little kids. Now they're grown up.
Yeah.
So what's the role of a trustee?
So what's the role of a trustee?
To go to parades and tree lights.
No, no, no.
And the pancake breakfast. I remember I used to be there, too, flipping your pancakes. Well, it's to have, you know, effective and accountable services and representation. I mean, as I quoted in my statement that I turned in, it's neighbors helping neighbors, essentially. So what's good for your neighbor hopefully is good for you, and you can't put too much. I think this ties in with your question about your personal views and all that. You have to do what's right for the community. And that's why I think the person chosen should be able to separate those things. And I would, like I said, even now, I enjoy talking to my neighbors, helping them solve problems. Whenever someone new moves to my neighborhood, I'm like, get on the HOA email, get on the township email list because lots of times people are unaware of those small things, but they help a lot, just learning about what's going on and other services, things like that.
All set?
I'm all set, yeah.
John?
Other questions?
No, John Stewart.
Two comments, one question.
Oh, no.
Your substantive resume fits. It fits for you for higher responsibilities and greater public service. I'm honored to read through your resume. Academic excellence from the University of Michigan and Marymount. Your second comment, I have to say this, but it's all positive. Your husband, Brian Broderick, is an advocate of the quietest, most persuasive nature for private schools all across Michigan. And when he came relevant to this community and talked to me about Plymouth Christian Academy and Catholic Central, he was dead-on with support for those private institutions. My only question for you that was texted in to me tonight, with your involvement in the community, how are you going to discern what is needed by the residents? And are you willing to engage community members in solving problems, challenges, and working for the benefit of the best interests of all people?
Yes, I would absolutely do that, 100%. Like I said, I enjoy working with people, talking to people in my neighborhood. And I think I'd be a great person for getting more people involved in the township. Because what I find is a lot of people complain and then they don't know, you know, after the fact. I hear a lot of, you know, just on social media, people complain about this or complain about that because they don't have the resources or the information. And I'm always telling people, did you hear about this? Did you hear about that? They'll say, I had no idea we're doing that in the township, things like that. So I'm the type of person who would be an advocate for the board or the township or anything else that's in the community, even with the neighboring communities, too.
The Broderick family is extremely honorable, and I've known them for 35 years. And I, all-time favorite people. And I think they are destined for, and I, there I go again, predestination Presbyterian. I think you're destined for some higher.
And my husband's an attorney, I should admit, too.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and that does it. Thank you.
Okay.
So that does it for the question period. So here's what we're going to do next. We will be selecting a trustee on Tuesday, July 14th, which is one week from today. That will be reflected in the agenda, which will be accessible to the public, we hope, by Friday morning online. Our website is going through some changes right now, so I cannot guarantee it will be on the website. And it's like we normally do it, but I think by Friday, we should be okay. If not, just give us a call and we'll, we'll get the agenda out to you electronically. There will be other items on that agenda that night. We are going to have the formal swearing in of Chief Naitel, Police Chief Naitel. We also have a couple other little, a couple other minor things. We do have a bunch of reappointments and appointments to various smaller boards and commissions. And then, most importantly, that night, we have the annual audit report. So whoever is appointed that night, you're going to be up here immediately, and you're going to have to absorb the audit. So read, read your agenda very thoroughly. The other thing is, you're going to be sitting next to John Stewart, so please keep that in mind. John is, John is usually pretty, pretty cooperative. Just don't, you know, anyway. So we're not going to change the seating arrangement. So that's what we're going to do on, on July 14th. I'm sorry, I said July. I got July on my mind. So June, sorry. So June 14th. So that's next week. Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? We're going to move on then to public comments. So public comments is our normal.
Is July the month that you are positively thinking about announcing that there's a grocery store coming?
We may be able to announce that later this month. There, the plans, this is all public knowledge. I mean, the plans have been submitted, and they're in the building department. And I'll just leave it at that.
Good.
Okay.
Hey, can I say one thing?
Yeah. Well, hold on, we're not at trustee comments yet.
Oh, I thought we were.
No, we're at public, we still, we do public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So sorry. We're doing public comments right now. It's just up to you. Three-minute rule applies. And again, because of the unique nature of tonight's meeting, let's try to keep it positive. Come on up. Oh, maybe, oh, maybe you don't want to make it positive.
Hi, my name is Beth Birmingham, and I am a 10-year resident of Lake Point. And I want to thank the board for taking the time to invite residents of Plymouth Township to submit their resumes and qualifications for this open seat on the board. And I hope the board really takes their time and does due diligence in making sure that all the candidates have the right qualifications, have the best interest of the township and the people. And I want to thank all of the residents that submitted their applications, including my husband. And I think all the candidates have great qualifications. And I hope, again, that the board does their due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Don Sonnen, and I live on 4604L West Danover Trail. And I wanted this evening really lend my support to Gail Greger for this position. She has a long history in public administration, and she certainly pointed out a bunch of that. Her degree's in public administration from IU. She was the village attorney for Pinkney. She served on the township's Citizen Advisory Council on Arts, Recreation, and Heritage. She's currently on the planning commission. You know her well. You voted for her a few months ago to put her on a planning commission. And most of you know her well from all of the work that she, she does in the community. She also has a long, long history of community service. She's on the Board of Directors of the Michigan Philomaniac. She's on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. She's on the Board of Directors of the Michigan Shakespeare Festival. She's a member of the Business Network International, a group of local business people who meet every Tuesday morning at 7:00 AM. I don't think she's ever missed a meeting. She's a member of Noon Rotary. She was a Girl Scout leader for over 10 years. Parent volunteer every year that her kids were in school. And she even founded the Bird School Book Club, including funding for that club amongst many other activities. Professionally, she's been a practicing attorney for over 30 years. She's owned her own business in Plymouth, doing countless fundraisers out of that business for supporting all kinds of good causes in Plymouth. She's currently the Executive Director of Park and has been for the past six years. She manages, has recruited and manages 53 tenants that have their offices in that building. And in addition, over 75 outside groups that use those facilities, managing all the scheduling, the supervision of all those activities. Park has been very successful by any measure. Let me tell you, Gail does the budgets, and she devours monthly financial statements. She reports directly to the board at the monthly board meetings. And this is as conservative and tough board as you could ever imagine. These folks are business people managing big companies, and she manages it right to the penny. And she always goes above and beyond. If you drive by there, she's virtually, there virtually seven days a week. Gail has an excellent relationship with the city. Park being located in the city, but she's also established a very, very good relationship with all the city officials, the rec department in the city, you know, all of the folks in the administration and on the board. She really would be an ideal candidate. If you're looking or considering a candidate to be a liaison between the township and the city, she'd be a great candidate. I've known her for seven years, and I'll wrap it up.
Wrap it up.
And seven years, and she has worked hard every single day. She will work harder than anything you've ever seen on this board. You saw her take the questions earlier on. She can sit in that chair day one and hold her own with all of you on this board. She made a great contribution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Who's next?
Robert Harris, Willoway Court in Plymouth Township. Number one, I think it's awesome that we have nine candidates for this trustee position. It's on the state level, for example, both Republican and Democratic side for the primary coming up in August, there were open, there were no candidates from one party or another. And people had to be called by their state party to, hey, would you run, even though the district is 60% the other, would you run as before representative 40%? And so people did that. But I just hope that of the nine, one of these is going to be chosen, that the other eight don't get discouraged. Just hang in there. Number two, there were comments and stuff about, about the political affiliation, your party affiliation, are you Republican, Democrat? To me, if you're a Democrat, you say you're Democrat, that's fine, or a little bit there and fine. But you got to be honest. I mean, the main thing I would look for if I were hiring somebody, and you, you guys work for us. And the main thing I look for before technical qualifications, background, et cetera, is moral integrity. And honesty is the most important thing. And there's so much junk going on in politics today at all levels that, to me, if you're, just be honest about your party affiliation. Okay? And number three, it just seems to me the cleanest way to pick somebody is, there was only one of the nine candidates that ran, that took the effort to run in the 2020 election, that filed a campaign, that did fundraising, and came in as the runner-up. And to me, that candidate would be the cleanest person, not the cleanest person, but the, the best qualified, not, even there's so many qualified, would be the best candidate. It would eliminate any biases or personal things, or, you know, my sister wants to be a trustee kind of thing. So that's where I come out. So I would support Gail Callahan. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
My name is Alex Wassel. I live on Loch Ness Court, Plymouth Township. A couple points, and then I'll be out of your hair. The number one point is, it's, it's a shame that we can't have an open election to select our candidates, but because of time or whatever, it seems like you're going to select, use the body of the Board of Trustees to select the next trustee. Number two is, whoever you select, hopefully, there'll be a candidate that supports low taxes, low-density housing, and low expenditures by the township. It's our tax dollars. We, we, we want to hold on to them if we can. Number three, for maybe the next board meeting next week, there was a question about election integrity. I don't know if you're aware, but CISA, which is the Cyber Security Infrastructure Security Agency, on June 3rd, just released a report showing some vulnerabilities to the minion voting system. Maybe everybody should bone up on that. And the next time we have a discussion on election integrity, we'll be well versed. The only thing I want to say is, thanks to all the candidates for coming out. I salute you. I also especially salute Jennifer Buckley for her commitment and her loss. And hopefully, we'll, you'll make the right decision, and we'll have a very good Board of Trustees. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Zantow. Forgive me, I've been coming here so long that I'm getting forgetful, so I have to read my notes. A big thank you goes out to all the candidates who took interest in being appointed to the open boards. The job of trustees is to represent the people. Research has been done, and two candidates have been lustered truthfully. It's so bad that I got a surprise call from former speaker of the House. He informed me that one of the candidate's social media accounts had been scrubbed with media comments. Listening to the Ken Collins, to me, is obvious what is going on. Otherwise, the court, Dan Callahan, I think this entire person was a waste of time. I am pretty certain that the decision is made behind closed doors, and this is the fix. I will be placing that name in an envelope, and if I am right, President Dorshavitz will be buying me dinner. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes.
I don't know.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Bethany Brownface. I just want to ensure to the board that we do like lawyers. I know it was brought up earlier. Just as moms, you know, sometimes people can speak at a very high law and business level, and that's very admirable, to have a very full resume and a full history in service. As moms, I think you'd like to see somebody who represents us, and who can come and speak to us, and who we can relate to, and, and represent.
Okay, thank you. Are you a Plymouth resident?
I, I lived in the city for four years, and I live in the township for a year and a half now.
Okay.
I'm just on the next panel of Plymouth Public Court. Anyway.
Chuck?
Anyway, I think we have a lot of good people who applied for the position. Thank you for putting yourselves out there. But I really think the person who should have the position is Dan Callahan. He spent many hours knocking on doors, talking to people, and he was the next highest vote getter in the primary. He has the qualifications and are needed to give some diversity to the board, and he represents the people. Everyone else can have an opportunity to go and campaign when the next election comes. But for the meantime, Dan Callahan is the person who should get the position. Thank you.
Okay.
So my name is Aileen Coleman. I live in Plymouth, like actually. And.
I mean, get closer to the mic so that.
Okay, sorry. So, Mr. Stewart, I actually found it very offensive how you stopped and talked to Jennifer Buckley. As a homeschool mom, I'm also a homeschool mom. So my, my kids went through all levels of education. So they went through public, private, Catholic, and then finally homeschooled, and then homeschooled at a homeschool school in classical education. And our kids, my oldest went to Hillsdale, classically educated as well. So I commend you for, it's a huge feat, right? And you should probably discuss with her what a classical education means afterward. It would probably be rude to do that, since you were kind of pitting her against a public education. Not appropriate, actually, as well. So you might want to have a discussion with her in private about what classically trained education means before you ridicule her. And I found it very offensive, actually. Also, I wish there was a vote for this position, because we're going to be trusting you to make this decision for us. So what the residents of Plymouth want, you need to weigh in, which would be right now, since we're in a very financially downturning, downturning economy, taxation. In philosophy, the philosophy of taxation drives decisions. Your decisions are based on how you think about something. So be mindful, the residents of Plymouth are concerned about finances right now. With, with gas prices at $5.25 a gallon, et cetera. And I'm sure all of you are concerned about finances as well, and the markets. And private property, being able to keep your private property. So be mindful of what your residents want. Not necessarily credentials. Lawyers are great. There's nothing wrong with lawyers. But a government has to be representative. It has to come from all walks of life, not just lawyers. And that's all I'll say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Please. Rick Ward, Plymouth Township resident for a long time, 30 years. Mr. Dorshavitz, the role of a trustee is to represent the community. So in this process, we're trusting you to represent the community. You have to appoint somebody. There's not going to be an election. Certainly, Dan Callahan ran in the primary. He was the next leading vote getter. If there was one more trustee, he would already be on the board. Certainly, he represents a pathway to representing the people. At least, there was a vote, and he was the next leading vote getter. There's, there's great candidates in this room. So beyond that, your role as a trustee is to represent the community and make the best decision on our behalf. Thanks to all the candidates.
Thank you.
Honestly, I'm really proud.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Very good. So it is coming up on 9:30. We're going to now do supervisor and trustee comments. I'm going to start with Chuck.
Well, I was impressed at how many good candidates came out today. I wish you'd have been around for the last 30 years, some of you. So thanks for coming and for understanding this. Election could have been held, but the resignation of the treasurer happened after the deadline for running in the primary in this August and November. Or if you waited long enough, if we don't do anything, the county clerk can call an election, I think, after 45 days.
How many is it? Five days?
Forty-five days.
It would appear on the November ballot.
It would not be a special election?
No.
I thought you said it was, it would have to be special?
That's what the statute says. A special election that would be held concurrently with the November election, is my belief.
Concurrently, all right. So that's kind of the logistics of how it tumbled out.
Okay, dodging. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that came out. I know it sounds redundant to say that, because you've heard it multiple times today, tonight. But it's not easy to put yourself out there. I know that. And I, I, you know, we can laugh about being a mom. A mom's a great, a great role. I'm a mom. But that's just chitter-chatter, you know, in terms of what we're really doing here today. The role isn't, isn't dismissed just because we're trying to come, to become a trustee. So I think that's great to homeschool. You know, that's, that's not an easy task to do. Having said that, I got, I received, and I think others received, some emails that were interesting to me. That's the best way I could put it politely, where there was a, an underlying tenet that this board is not being transparent. You know, our meetings typically last until about 9 o'clock. It's 9:30 tonight. If we didn't care, we would just do. If we didn't care, we would just do a soft touch through it all and, and, and be gone. Okay? We care. This is a board that cares. And why do we see the kinds of people that came forward today for this position? Because Plymouth Township is representative of the people that came up for this position. Because you're dedicated. Okay? So I take it, I don't take it personally, what I saw, but I want whomever that was, those people that did that, to understand, at least I'm going to talk about myself, to be transparent, as transparent as I can be. This isn't just perfunctory, in my opinion. Everyone had something great to say. Everyone could be, could have a role on this board, everyone, just like I did. And I wasn't a politician either. Okay? And by the way, I'm not just an attorney, I'm a pharmacist. So there's a pharmacist on this board too. Okay? But I want you to know, we appreciate what you've done. And, and it's not going to be an easy decision. And it's not going to be an easy decision because you are that good of a candidate and that we haven't picked someone in advance so that this all here is just a ruse. Okay? I want you to know that. And for the people that wrote me, thank you for writing. I appreciate hearing that. I just want you to know, we try to be as transparent as we can. All right? Thank you.
Okay, Bob.
I would like to echo a lot of the comments that I heard. So I would like to take the seven candidates and put them together and make a company. And what a great company that would be, what a great skill set. I mean, I was overwhelmed by the quality of candidates that I've seen here tonight. In my 18 years in public service, one of the things that I always come back to, that I like the most about it, is that it gives you the opportunity to really meet the good people in the community, the people that care and they get it. And that's what I think we witnessed here tonight, with seven, seven great candidates that care about the community. And you all got it. You all, you know, you know, I, I asked questions that didn't have a right or wrong answer, but I think everybody got it and it's, it's a really difficult question. I think the argument about, you know, it is partisanship in terms of the primary. And I think you're nominated by your party in the primary, you're elected by the people, but you serve all of the people, not just the people in your party. And I do appreciate the comments when people talk about the intersection of, I think it was Mr. Miller talked, or, I'm sorry, one of the candidates talked about the intersection of right and left. It's, you know, but what, what's relevant about the partisanship side of it is, I think it creates a framework from which you can assume, and I, a person has certain ideological beliefs and that becomes the basis from which they make decisions. I think that's where the relevance comes in, because at the local level, you know, the ideology doesn't play into, into most of the decisions that you end up making. You can't make all of the people happy. I've learned that over the years. You feel, I've filled a room with fans and I've filled a room with enemies before. So eight people are, you know, are not, are not going to be happy. But I think that the, I think there's merit to the argument that one of the candidates finished fifth. I think that does have merit. I don't think it's conclusive. I think it's one factor that I'll weigh. I believe that everyone up here is going to make their assessment different from everybody else. And there's different criteria that we weigh. I know in my mind what's important to me and I know that I have, I, I was weighing that criteria as I was listening to people speak tonight. But I believe that has merit. I don't believe it's outcome determinative and I think there were some good arguments made on that, on that side. Running for office, if you haven't done it before, is extremely difficult because it is the ultimate rejection, because you're, you're standing on somebody's porch and you're not trying to sell a vacuum cleaner, you're trying to sell yourself. But what I, I found that I really began to enjoy it over the, through, through the five campaigns, because one of the things that I found was that even people, I can count on one hand the number of times people were rude to me on their porches. There were people that said, hey, look, I know who you are, I don't support you, but thanks for coming by, but they weren't very, one hand, the number of times that people were actually rude to me. And that speaks volumes about the community and it speaks volumes about, about the people that you get, you get, as, as a member in public service, you get the opportunity to meet, you know, so many great people and people like yourselves. And everybody that is here tonight came out because you care. You have, you want your voice to be heard and you care. And I, I can't thank you enough and tell you how important that is to me after all of these years. You have to, that, so that's the good of, of this job. You know, the bad is sometimes you got to have, make tough decisions that have local impact. And sometimes I've had, you, you might have to make a decision that impacts your friends and your neighbors. I've had, I've had neighbors that, you know, don't really want to speak to me because of some of the decisions that I've had to make over the years. And the ugly side of it in the internet age and the social media is, you know, people will say bad things about you on the internet. All of us, everyone up here has had bad things said about them on the internet. And they'll say bad things about your family. My wife has been attacked before. But if, but if you're selected and you become a member of this board, or you choose to run in the future and you win a seat on it, my advice to you is you got to figure out how to just tune that out. Just tune it out and not let that, not, not let, let that get to you. And that's the ugly side of it. So like I said, you know, once again, I thank everybody for coming out. You know, I, my head is swimming. I've seen such, you know, such good answers to, you know, complex questions and I've seen so, so many good candidates. I'm going to have a really difficult time, you know, weighing my decision and coming to a conclusion. But thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. John?
Thank you to the candidates. Thank you for, to everyone coming and good night.
No, Andy, he doesn't say good night. I say good night. Caught me off guard there. So, so I haven't said anything yet, so hold on. I want to echo a little bit what Bob has already said, the positives and the negatives. So let's talk about the positives first. And the positives are that we've had nine really good people come forward. It is not easy to get people to serve in public office. It, it's a lot of work and there's a lot of decisions that have to be made. Some of them are unpopular, some of them are difficult, some of them require a lot of research. Sometimes you have to go out of your, out of your experience and training and ask questions and, and learn about an issue that maybe you've never had to, to deal with before. And so I applaud everybody who came forward tonight. You're, you're good people and I'm really, I'm really thrilled that we were able to get such a, a high-quality group of, of folks. So the, I guess the negative side of all of this is, you know, Plymouth Township politics is pretty rough and tumble. And I'm, I've been a, kind of a, the poster child of that more than once. I'm the guy that won the write-in campaign against the whole, you know, Republican establishment. And I know how ugly it can get. And unfortunately, we did see some of this ugliness again in this, in this selection process. And we're talking about social media, talking about flyers that have gone out, we're talking about emails that we've received. And some of them, I won't even dignify by repeating them, but they're sufficient to say that they're ugly and they're unnecessary. And that has the effect of turning people off to public service. And we cannot have that. We've got to have good people come forward. So again, I applaud all of you for doing that. Thank you for, for those of you who have had to endure some of the, the stings and jabs of, of the ugliness that we've seen. You know, I, I think it was, I've heard it more than once, politicians say that they don't, they take shots at you when you are over the target. So if you're getting shot up, you're probably over the target, which means you're, you're doing, you're doing the right thing. But we are going to proceed as, as scheduled for next week. These, these positions do need to be filled in a timely manner, otherwise we would have to have a, a special election, which I believe would be concurrent with the November election this year. That would, that would force people to run for office in a very tough election year. 2022 is going to be just as rough as 21, as 20 was. So we're, we're trying to accelerate the process so that we can get somebody on the ground here quickly who can, who can learn the, the role of a trustee and, and serve admirably. So those are just some of my comments. Again, I can't thank everybody enough. I think this was a really good session tonight. I had a lot of concerns coming in, but I think everybody did a great job and I thank you for your interest and for your service and we'll see you all next week. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by trustee Stewart, is there a second? Second by trustee Monahan, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned.